Alright, can I have your attention please? Um, please rise for the pledge.
Alright, uh, first on the agenda is a public hearing from Ninety Broadway, down we've been noticing.
Public hearing will be held Monday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. The Menace Municipal Building. At two fifty Broadway for the purpose of a special use permit for cannabis dispensary at Ninety Broadway. Such hearings are open to the public and accessible to the handicap. All encouraged to attend and comment or present their comments and write in to Clark Vanderhand.
Okay, so we'll start um with a presentation from the owners. Um, just to let you all know, um, our engineer had a death in the family yesterday. So it's likely this'll go over into the next meeting when he's able to come attend because we're pretty sure there's gonna be some questions that he's gonna need to ask. Sorry.
We're gonna keep, just so, we're gonna keep the public hearing open until the next meeting. We'll allow the uh, the engineer um, to provide us with thoughts and comments.
Alright, hello, my name is Joseph Kelly. I'm an entrepreneur from about an hour and twenty minutes north. Um, this is my business partner, George Valamos. Um, let's see here, we chose Menance for the central location of a cannabis dispensary. I have a license um, through the state of New York. There's lots of guidance through the state to tell us how to do it. Um, there's a lot of rules and regulations to follow, um, which we are completely compliant a hundred percent. Um, the location itself uh, is a great space for it and communication with the world with the conjunction of the highways and things. Um, my personal background, I've been, my community is thirty-six hundred people, so a little less than what you guys have here. Uh, I have a pizzeria there, a bottle redemption center, liquor store, and a um barbecue place and an ice cream shop. You can contact my community at any point in time and find out what my background's been for twenty-six years there. We've only brought good things to the community.
What town is that if I?
Whitehall, New York, yep. Um, and uh, we've had, my liquor store I've had for approximately sixteen years and we've never once failed on an underage sale at all whatsoever. Um, that's a little bit about me. Um, like as far as safety and many concerns, I mean, um, we're, the state's pretty much lined everything out for us all for your protection and ours. Anything you wanna add, George?
I'm, I'm a New York resident my whole life as well. Um, I've been in the restaurant business since I was seven years old. Been dealing with uh, you know, alcohol, alcohol for thirty years. I've been uh, never had an underage sale. My family owned and operated a diner for fifty-six years. We recently left the restaurant business and now my focus has been in veto cannabis. We set up a site to work with about a hundred and fifty companies that are entering the New York market. So we have developed a very professional and a, a very, a massive knowledge for us to operate with and we have a huge support system for all areas that we would need to open this business. We have experienced partners behind us and we're gonna operate to the full compliance of the law. And we would like to generate, you know, economic growth for the community. We're gonna bring a lot of good paying jobs and a lot of tax revenue to the community for you guys to use where you see fit. So we look forward to doing business here.
One thing I left out, but with the state this program that they have carved out, three percent of our sales come right here to the local municipality. Based on a million dollars a month in sales, that's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in tax revenue. The gentleman in Schenectady Upstate Kero is nineteen mi- or um, nineteen minutes from here, I believe. Um, and he's doing one point eight million two months in a row on, in sales. Um, and he's on target to do, I think, two point two this month. And as of today, no problems in the line. Has been no extended crime down there. Another thing that comes with us is a heavy surveillance. That property at Ninety Broadway will know what quarter mile, half mile up the road and somebody's in our, in our facility or in our vicinity. It's bank, it's bank quality secure, which can be shared with the P D, you know, to track down other crimes that come on through the community also by using our surveillance. So, so just a couple of things from us.
There's a uh, I, I, I was online, there's another company, Northern Lights Cannabis, which is out in the Midwest and in Canada. Michal, Peninsula Cana, you guys, is there any relation company wise?
No affiliation.
Okay, that's, so that's Northern Lights Cannabis, you guys and Northern Lights, there's no relationship at all?
Not whatsoever, okay.
Uh, a quick question, um, how, does it operate the same way as say a liquor store or a tobacco store? Um, just same uh, what's the word, the same uh, kind of security so to speak? Um, you don't allow anyone under the age of twenty-one to enter the facility?
If, if I had, I have a liquor store, um, the rules are pretty strict. As far as cannabis goes, it's even more strict. Um, with us, it, it's gonna be very much like a liquor store. Most people, the average sale in a liquor store is under two minutes. Most people know what they want in a liquor store. They go in, they get their bottle, they come back out. Marijuana in the beginning is going to be, it's new, so people are gonna wanna see all the varieties and things like that, but after a while, it's gonna be, you're gonna come in, you're gonna get your product, you're gonna be right back out the door again.
Right.
Yeah, and our business will be offering um, delivery service also, so that helps cut down on the traffic that's at the location, even though this location has got plenty of parking and, you know, plenty of main arteries going to it. But just in conjunction with delivery, it does help curb some of that.
Okay. Anybody else?
Do you have any idea of what your hours will be and how often you'll be open at this point or?
We do believe it's gonna be seven days a week, nine to nine. Um, the state does have some guidelines where the municipality could limit us to seventy hours a week.
We, we may discuss that.
Yep, and that's, that still gives us seven, ten hour days. Well, I would have no gripe with that myself, you know.
I'll go first.
Ladies first.
Thank you.
Ladies first before gentlemen.
Okay, so Bill, you don't mind having two questions?
I have a question, but.
Okay, thank you. Your question. First, I'd like to know what the products are, like, they're like edibles and gummies and as well as smokables, is that it?
Yeah, it will be all of the above.
What else?
There is, well, there is um, edibles, flour, which we were for smokable, there is concentrates, which is dab farms. Um, there is drinks, um, we hope to be getting into, there's topical ointments and things. Uh, we hope to be getting into, um, there was some refrigerated products before, some ice cream. It's, the market is so, yeah, the market is so new, infusing products is going to be another license. Yeah, within the next year, you'll, you'll see dozens of, of products come out to infuse products, because there's, you know, there's the medical value obviously to cannabis in addition.
Okay, so uh, another question is, um, with the delivery system, um, how do you prevent delivery to a house where the guy's older brother is there and then the kids have the, um, yeah, a kid, let's say a middle school kid gets the cannabis?
We have to check an I D at the door. We have to make a sale at the door with a valid I D. So yes, I understand where you're coming from, someone older gentleman could be purchasing it and giving that to a child. That is on that person, just like if somebody was to purchase alcohol and give to a child. But we have to check a valid I D at the door. And there is a good video on, it was CBS News, they did a ride along with the delivery service out of Schenectady, Upstate Cana. If you check, um, Don Andrews, I believe is his name. Um, but if you check Upstate Cana, CBS News went right with him on delivery, so you can see how it works and, um, what the process is there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now, you were saying it's gonna create some good jobs. Exactly how many good jobs it's gonna create?
Protecting anywhere between thirty and forty full-time jobs.
How many buildings will, will they use?
Buildings.
On Ninety Broadway?
We're using one space in the box.
Alright.
The end cap.
The only thing, what I'm concerned, I've been hearing concerns is that people do not wanna have this near school properties or near residential areas. I don't want, and I don't wanna see this anywhere near residential areas or at the school property. Understand what I'm saying?
Right, the law, we do understand, the law states that we have to be two thousand feet away from schools and a thousand feet five, five hundred from school property and two hundred from houses of worship.
I mean, I don't wanna, but you know, I'm just gonna have to express my opposition.
Absolutely.
For general welfare, public safety, social, moral, and quality of life reasons. Just like with this fusion, now, fusion recovery.
Different topics.
Well, it's different topics, but I'm afraid I'm gonna have to just like a lot of people here in the village.
That's okay, that's understandable. That's why we're here, just being upfront with you and letting you know exactly what the scenario is.
I'm just worried, we're worried about we're gonna have crime, we're gonna have violence, gonna have terrorism, this and that.
We can show you statistically throughout anywhere in the country that there's a dispensary open, crime has gone down. You're asking folks behind you with the P D because of surveillance. When you have unlimited amount of surveillance from dispensary to dispensary, now we can start connecting the dots. If you ask how they, you know, get crimes from one side of the town to the other, it's simply looking at your door, ring doorbells, different surveillance from other businesses. My location in Whitehall, two different locations, we've solved probably over ten crimes in the last twenty years due to our surveillance equipment. You know, so crime does go down because, ask yourself, are you gonna be committing a crime intentionally in front of surveillance? But nobody, I mean, how much crime happens in front of the police department? Probably not a heck of a lot.
The only thing is, if you're gonna ask a person for I D, you should ask a person who's he gonna give it, who she's gonna give it to. You should do, that should be done.
Okay.
So that way you don't give it to a child, because anything happens to a child.
I get that. See, we run into this with a liquor store, how the gentleman mentioned earlier about, it's not, it's not true that a twenty-one year, somebody below twenty-one can go in a liquor store. That's, that's not true. If this young lady brings in her daughter or her son to the liquor store and she's purchasing herself a bottle, I am due to check her I D only. I can't give her a hard time about who's in the car with her or who's holding her hand or what.
Well, it's not intended that way.
Right, right, so we have to check a valid I D and we make a sale to somebody that is twenty-one and up. And that, that's, that's our obligation.
Well, I thank you for answering my question and welcoming my opposition to this.
Absolutely. Everybody's opinion matters, absolutely.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, in Schenectady, near the dispensary that's there, a few doors down, there's a dance studio with children of all ages. And there's been no concern there whatsoever.
He's got a license through the officer cannabis management that states he has to be X amount of feet away, so he would not be allowed to be open if he was too close to those locations. And I understand what you're saying, if there's children there, there's children there, and I get it, but the law, the law stated that.
Whether it's near a school or children, there hasn't been an issue.
Oh, exactly, exactly. And like I said, I mean, with the amount of surveillance that's around the location, it's really, I mean, it's really hard to uh, and we can't prevent every problem. Every business in the community, we all have a couple of issues here and there. We can't, we wanna be responsible for our customers or our patrons, but we can't be always a hundred percent responsible for what they're gonna do after we're done doing business with them. Yes.
Can we talk about the money a little more? So the village fans, you get three percent of your gross or your net?
Three, three percent of tax revenue. There's a thirteen percent state tax. Three percent of that goes to the local municipality.
The total sales.
So your thirteen percent, is that on your gross or your net?
It's on the gross.
It's on the gross, so, so it's, it's thirteen percent of a million and then we get three percent of that.
Yeah.
And so how is that money given to the village? Like, how do we get that money into our drinking?
That's a question for the officer cannabis management, to be honest, because they control that fund.
So it goes to the state, Eric, and then are we like in and out of mountains and paperwork to get our three percent?
Just like sales.
I could answer that for you.
Just like sales tax. So first it goes to the state, county, and then to us.
And then to you.
Quarterly.
Quarterly or?
Quarterly.
No strings attached, correct? From what I understand, three percent, no questions asked.
There is some clarification about that, though. I think it's actually, I thought it was four percent.
One, one percent goes to the county. Nine percent goes to the state, one percent goes to the county, three percent to the local municipality.
We have to share with the town.
Yes.
And it's by law fifty-fifty, but I've requested from the town that they um, switch it up to seventy-five, twenty-five, seventy-five to us since we have our own police fire and D P W. Um, they were supposed to discuss it this week's meeting, so I haven't heard back yet.
So technically, it's only one and a half percent.
Yeah, well.
I understand, that's what you say, yeah.
That you're trying to get it.
Well, three percent is coming to Menance. The municipality itself, it's got, together is getting three percent. I'm in, my, I'm in the very same situation in my location. There's thirty-seven hundred people, we have a village and a town.
In Whitehall?
In Whitehall. One and a half percent would go to the village, one and a half percent would go to the town. When you're talking about municipal town payers, taxpayers, you're all paying for the same community in which you live in. So I don't have a gripe with the town of my community getting one, one and a half percent and my village only getting one and a half percent. I mean, the whole municipality is gonna benefit that a hundred percent.
I'm not arguing with you. To know where, how the money was getting run over to us and I thought there was gonna be layers where people were gonna have their hands in the pot.
Um, they've left us out of that end of it. We know that we have to collect and hand in that three percent is gonna go back to the municipality. Like you said, we have to collect thirteen percent. We don't see a lot of those taxes because they're already built in with the growers and the processors and then when you made your final sale. Just like alcohol. Alcohol is taxed three times, twice before you folks see it.
I have one more question because our neighbor's fusion therapist there said they're gonna give everybody your free treatment to recover.
Ice cream.
The rent knows that end of it, so.
So getting back to the tax, how much do you project that the village will have after a year of taxes based upon your sales?
If they're gonna split it, if the village is splitting it with the town, it's one eighty and then whatever you can negotiate beyond that?
Yes, if it was fifty-fifty then, because we're basing a, a million dollars a month on sales. Now, like I said, nineteen miles away, or is, I, I give you that part, about twenty-five minutes away. So like I said, he's doing one point eight right now and on projection to do two point one or two point two. We're only basing this on a smaller scale of a million dollars a month in sales. We hope to be doing, we anticipate doing three to four times what he's doing Schenectady with the size of this facility and the availability of what we have versus his location there. We, we intend to do three to four times that amount, but the industry's so new, we don't really, you know, you're only going, there's only twelve other models right now. There's twelve other models in the state of New York to follow. And they don't really want nothing to do with us up here because they're all over the rest of the state where the real money is, you know, they're, they're headed down to New York City, out to Buffalo, Syracuse, you know.
As long as you're on the money, is this completely separate from sales tax that's collected?
Yes.
The thirteen percent is not including, the sales tax is not including that thirteen percent?
It's the only tax, yeah. Not in, there's no sales tax on addition, so thirteen percent tax.
Total, yeah. And that, and like I said, a lot of, some of that is being taxed from the grower and then the processor and then the store itself.
Is all product kept behind the counter?
Yes, it has to be kept in a secure vault. We'll have, when you think of a vault, you're thinking of a safe.
If you come in the store, if you come in the store, is all product behind a counter? Can anybody access any of the?
It comes from a fulfillment section that we're gonna build out.
It's all similar McDonald's.
You come into an entrance room and then they bring you into another room. So when you come in, it's just like a room like this, you don't even know.
You scan the person's license when they come in.
Let into another room.
It's Schenectady, anyway.
I don't have been to Schenectady.
Well, I'll just, sir, when we, when the Schenectady first opened, me and my girl went down there to see exactly what you're talking about. So we waited, waited in line for about an hour. Then you get to the front of the line, they check your valid I D and anybody that's with you. Then you stand there, when they open the door, that's locked from the outside and the inside, he's the only one to unlock the door. He allows about six to eight people in with his situation. We have more room. He lets six or eight people in. You now go up to the counter, scan your license a second time. Now, you stand there and wait patiently. A third person comes out of another secured room, takes you back there and handles you. Shows you what we have, the shelves on the wall with glass over the top of it. So that you can say, okay, I'd like to, I'd like to touch that, I'd like to look at that. You can now touch and look at that, but there's no other cannabis in the room besides what's behind those counters. Now, you're in a secured room with me, say, and I'm asking you what your needs are. You're looking to sleep at night, you're looking to function during the daytime. What, what's the scenario? And then after you tell me what you want, we place your order on a bomb pilot and that goes through into a secured room, which we call a vault. Which will be, how big are we talking for our vault? A couple hundred square feet, a couple hundred square feet, and that's where all the cannabis is kept at all times. So when an order comes in, it's packaged back there in that room and then sent through a window to you as the customer and now you're out the door. We allow you, we open the door and let you on your way out.
So when you go to somebody's house to deliver this product, how is the license, is it scanned? You just read it? Well, I mean, can anybody provide a false ID of license to you in that circumstance? How is the license verified at the door of the?
From what I've seen from the video, is you're just checking the I D just like buying a new one at your store?
I, I, I'm asking what you're going to do.
What we're gonna do is it, well, if, the way the New York lottery is set up, if you sell lottery tickets in your store, they have a program on there for when you come in to scan your I D, even if you're buying alcohol. You can scan the I D and the program comes up. I'm going to assume that the P O S systems that we have are gonna do the same thing. Like I said, this program is tightly guided by the.
Is this, but you're going to somebody's house? That's something when you're delivering. How do you, how do you know with their license, how do you know it's that person with their license? How do you verify the license?
Just like when you come into my liquor store, I have to look at your license. If a corner of that I D is peeled up, I don't, I can't accept it.
But many liquor stores, but many liquor stores have a scanner, many beer stores have a scanner now. Are you gonna have a scanner at the residential location to make sure it's an actual correct New York state I D?
If they're available, yes. If there's a handheld that's available for us to do so, then of course.
Okay, so then the third question, you're going to be keeping a massive amount of cash, I assume, because there's some credit cards allowed? Are the, what are the provisions to, to protect the cash? How is that gonna be handled with Menance Police Department? Or with other, others? Because it's a cash business, right?
It is a cash business, but we gotta be a little careful of how much we discuss.
Yeah, Joe, you want?
For instance?
You said you wanted to be careful of certain things as far as protecting.
For an example, there's a, there's a gentleman also in Schenectady that has a delivery site only. He cannot reveal his location.
I, I, I don't need to, I just need to know that there's some level of security here that.
I would, bank level security. Bank level security in the facility or so?
Yes.
The money is now allowed to be transferred into banks also. There's nothing stopping us from, if there was a bank in this area that accepts it, that to be able to get a um, uh, what do they call that? If you guys go ahead. With cash transportation. Cash transportation. I know Stewart's in White, in my small town, at eleven o'clock when they close, the local police department goes over and um, they follow the young lady down to the bank and she puts the money in the drop box. Thank you.
That's his hot dogs, he uses breaks.
What's that?
That's his hot dogs and water, bleeding and breaks. For real, I watch him pull up.
I know the C D L school over here uses breaks and they're just up the street.
So one of the, couple of the things in the packet from the state, um, blood deliveries must be prepaid at the time the order is made, so there's no trash, cash transaction with the delivery and the home.
Correct, right, and like, my girl just reminded me also about the license thing. When they call, uh.
Young woman who works with you.
Or my girlfriend. Now you lost my track, man, I'm sorry.
Your license, your license is connected to your order. So you, we already know that you have a good license, because we've already ran it and we're headed to your house and you have to prove your license with your face. You know, so it's, it's already connected to your order. We've already, we've already.
I was gonna work if you're asking, you're gonna have to, you scan in your license. No, that's what I'm saying, I mean, this is just, I mean, you said the orders have to be prepaid before delivery.
A debit card.
They call. Yeah, no, no, debit cards can be accepted and you will start to see credit cards will be accepted in the cannabis business inside of the next thirty to sixty days from when we're here. You'll be able to.
And some more of the deliveries must be made to a physical address within New York State, may not be made um, to anyone inside of motor vehicles. They can be made to a customer at all forms of residential properties, short or long-term residences, deliveries are not permitted anywhere else including but not limited to public building, public spaces, including parks, community centers, any school grounds, daycare centers, and hazardous workshops.
One thing I would just like to say is, this is gonna be a high-end class dispenser. This isn't gonna be your local corner pot shop, you know, pot shop down the road, bodega. This is gonna be a very high-end class.
You'll see the cannabis business will be going over suit and tie at some point.
With all that.
You mentioned waiting like over an hour in line. How are you managing people that are waiting outside for, to get into your shop?
It, I was referring to his line there, because like I said, in his, um, he's only got, I don't even know offhand. I would have to say his, his waiting area might only be fifteen feet long and maybe twelve feet wide. He can only seat about, got like a horseshoe seat, he can only seat about six people at a time. We will have, um, how many windows did we decide we were born with the? Yes, we'll have about eight cash registers set up and he knows a little more of the timeframe. We anticipated, what, about five minutes? Maybe fifteen in the beginning when they were first coming through because it's gonna be more, people are gonna wanna look around. But after you've bought your products several times, you're gonna know what you're looking for, you know.
And this Schenectady store is about as big as this room to that curtain? His store is bigger than this, you know, it's probably almost double this room, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Almost six thousand.
It's really not even gonna be compared.
We'll be able to answer your question. We're gonna be able to have, he's got, um, he's only scanning, he's got one scanner in the front and he's only has, I believe, four in the back. So we're going to go over double what he's got for registers and we'll have at least two people scanning to come in the front and we'll be able to hold more people indoors to keep the line from out front. And delivery does help with, with the line. The first month or so, I'm sure it's gonna be busy. You know, I'm sure that it's going, I mean, he's still got a line down there and he's three and a half months in, you know. Um, but our facility is a little larger, we have a much larger location for the line across the front of the store. Um, we've been asked to stay away from the backside of the store. And there might have been some discrepancy because I read the permit at the building, the location we're looking at for Ninety Broadway, just so everybody's clear, is right next to Kentucky Fried Chicken, right up front. The Times Union did a story last week and they've got the Dollar Tree store with the pitcher and things and that, you know, that's not so. We're right up in the front area there. So if you look at that entire sidewalk across the front, on our building, not out by the road. We've got that section there and then we have the whole long sidewalk that goes up. There is other businesses, you know, so we'll have to stay onto our area, but I haven't actually measured the area, I'll find out how many people would be in line at a time, but we will have security out there at the door, watching the line. And there is obvious surveillance also.
Yes, that was my question, is how you manage the line, what kind of the line, how many could be to bring in? Obviously, there's gonna be a line, even if you can take in twice as many. So if, if, if that's the scenario, then the line would be a half hour instead of an hour. Just wanna make sure it's being managed, obviously.
Like I said, we'll have one person at the front of the line checking I Ds and we'll keep everything in uniform. I mean, I, besides that surveillance, I'm not sure what else, we're asked, what else would, what would you guys do? I mean, I'm open for, I'm open for um, some ideas, you know, I mean, this is the, I got, I'm an entrepreneur, as I introduced myself. That's how we get to where we are with bouncing stuff off, throw it against the wall, see what sticks, get some other people's opinions on the matter. I'm open for any kind of ideas, what we could do that would also, not only for safety, but would also not run the business empty also.
Now, you mentioned like bank level security, does that mean that your security is armed?
No. In the cannabis industry, there will be no armed service in the state of New York. And it's not only, the officer cannabis management may allow that, but no insurance company in the state of New York is going to cover us if there is a firearm on the scene at all, correct, George? And no, no weapons. No insurance will cover whatsoever, no weapons at all. And that's not the kind of environment we're breeding in.
George, not security.
One thing that I've heard keeps the line moving in Massachusetts dispensary is pre-ordering and you have a separate. is pre-ordering, and you have a separate, I've heard this, I wouldn't know, but you have a separate line.
Pre-orders, exactly, I did witness that in Schenectady. Pre-orders, yes, pre-orders that were coming through, because we were all in the line headed this way. Pre-orders, come to the front of the line, they had already pre-ordered, and normally when you pre-order, you have a timeframe that you're picking on. I mean, if you're late, it's not a big issue, but we normally have a timeframe for when you're coming in. And another thing that they did also in Massachusetts, because the same day that he opened up in Schenectady, he opened on a Thursday or a Friday, Monday's when we went, we also hit three in the state of Massachusetts to see, and one of the things they implemented, which Sue caught on to, was, um, they had somebody else in the line in addition with a Palm Pilot taking orders. So you had your phone call orders in, and you had your pre-orders in line.
There's a section next to Tuscan Gardens?
Yes, that's a pizza place?
Yeah.
Yes, he's at the opposite end, I'm at the front. He's at the very back. Businesses. Yeah, I don't know what's in there, to be honest with you. Originally, I thought it was right. But it was just a mess. Yes, but the other window that I'm talking about, seven hundred Broadway, I'm permitted. So that's why we got a little confusion with that for the store.
Well, it's the old shoe town.
Shoe town.
Helps us all hold purpose.
All right, are there any more questions?
Are you doing medicinal, medicinal?
For medical?
Yeah.
Um, no, ours is, ours is different. Medical use is trying to get into the recreation, so they will be coming onboard at some point. Um, we're only adult users, yeah, we, we're not a medical license.
So in New York?
Got them to the same roof as a breakfast menu, but they are allowing, um, uh, medical use companies that are already exist, not to be new ones, ones that already exist in New York State now, for, uh, twenty billion dollars. They're allowing them to buy in to the recreational marijuana business. We obviously, as recreation, wanna keep them out, they, they've already done the medical use, they've got their facilities already up and running. You know, but obviously, their clientele with just medicine use versus the general public, there's gonna be a smaller amount of sales for them, so now they want in on that. And they're willing to pay twenty million dollars for the license.
Is there any efforts to, uh, uh, prohibit or limit consumption as they leave the store, like, in, in case of liquor stores, of course, you can't open the bottle as you walk out the door and drink the alcohol. In, in your case, is there any limitations on that, that client now walking out the door, walking up the street towards the school, um, et cetera, et cetera, are there any things there that you're?
The law requires, the law takes care of that. We, we can, that's, that's, uh, just like, um, once again with the alcohol, if people, if they purchase the alcohol, I mean.
No, no, if, can somebody walk out the store and search?
They're not, we, they're not allowed, there will be signs that there is, it's a smoke-free zone, it's a non-consumption site. Manass, the Village of Manass is off the, out of consumptions. So there's, there's no consuming on-site, and they're not allowed to smoke on-site. Now, once again with my liquor store, I can tell you that you can't, you can't pop that bottle and drink it in my store, but I'm also gonna tell you, several customers will walk to their car and pop the lid. I, what am I to do there? That, that's, if they are, if they have a valid ID and they're not intoxicated, I need to make that safe. That's the law.
But they pop the bottle, they pop the bottle in your store, the S L A.
Exactly, and that's because they can't pop a bottle, and I have security for those purposes, you know? But what they do outside my restaurant, or outside the liquor store, I'm sorry, I can't control. These folks, there will be no smoking signs, just like out here. The counties have had to make some changes, Washington County, they allow, you can smoke, well, the law states in New York State, you can smoke marijuana or consume cannabis. It's any, it's playing anywhere that you, that tobacco is allowed, except for in a auto, is what it states. We will, you know, it's a no-smoking site, you can't consume here, but what they do outside, we can't control. And technically, I know that sounds terrible, and you're not gonna like the answer, but you, nobody could stop somebody from walking by a school and fortunately smoking marijuana. We don't want that, I understand that, but nobody could stop somebody from smoking a cigarette walking by that school. Even, you know, that, that's my only, you know, we don't want it either, you know? We don't want that either, but we can't control that.
So I have a question about dosages, and, you know, it's one thing with familiarity with smoking a cigarette, it's another thing with edibles. So I'm not sure, here I am, supposedly a novice going into the store, and I think I'll have, you know, a package of gummy bears, and some brownies, and a ice cream. Uh, how do I know how much I'm ingesting, and what's gonna make me high, and what's gonna knock me out? Is there any educational?
Yeah, packaging, every package, I'll let you go from there. All, all the packaging is gonna be labeled. That you know exactly what you're ingesting in each piece, and then it's our job to provide you educational material to know what's going on in the store with all the products. And our butt-fenders will be knowledge to explain to you on the proper dosage, and get to where you wanna go.
Yeah, so I'd like to know, you know, how much it raises my blood alcohol level, you know, or as equivalent to that? Yeah, I think it's if I'm gonna get out and drive or something, I wanna make sure I'm safe, right?
Right, well, you can't drive under the influence of cannabis or alcohol to begin with. So this is something that you should, you know, if you're doing at home, you're not gonna be out driving around, but the package is gonna have the dosage on there, just like you're tying in all bottle wood. There's gonna be X amount in that package, it's gonna tell you what the milligrams are for each piece that's ingested. And that's gonna be a personal consumption on you. Somebody like, you know, if I was recommending for you, it would be a very small dose, being a new starter, and it would probably be a half of a gum. So somebody like me, I'm three hundred pounds, I smoke on a regular basis, I'm gonna have several of them, but that's me personally. You're, you're obviously not, just like with alcohol, you know? I may have a couple more drinks than you, to get the same kind of bucks, but everything will be on the package. Um, we just don't have any, I didn't have any samples, I didn't go to a show last week. We could have brought some samples to show you, because the packaging, to show you the packaging. The packaging is very non-hit friendly. You can look at packages from any other state, and the candies look just like the candies you buy at the store. New York State is, our, our packaging is very limited to the colors we can use. We're not using the colors, it's, it's our process. They are limited to, they're the only ones that can package this product, and everything has to be labeled and one hundred percent tested.
Um, you, you mentioned your own liquor store, that you can't tell somebody that is intoxicated. Is your, your story is high?
No, it would fall under the same rules. The, when this cannabis management, the office cannabis management runs the program, but they are governed by the state liquor authority. So much, what I was here for a meeting, you guys talked about with this other company coming in, our license is just like a liquor license. If we break any of the rules or regulations, these folks can come in and make a complaint and take our license, you know, as far as the PD goes.
Um, I also work in substance use. Um, are you gonna have anything there in case you have people that maybe become addicted? Do you even have any, like, information on, you know, Oasis, or any of those kind of things? I'm not saying you have to say, you can't use this for your addict, but, you know? I mean, this has been, you can become addicted to marijuana, so you can any other drug.
Well, there's not, there's no evidence of addictive factor being with, with cannabis.
You have an addictive personality, trust me, you should be addicted. Trust me, I've been doing this for thirty years, I don't even.
So, no, we don't need to go there, but how much literature have you done with people getting off hard drugs and turning to cannabis? This cannabis is used as a medication to get people off opiates, not like Suboxone, another opiate in that position. Let's compare apples to apples, that's all.
No, no, I'm, I'm not even, I mean, I, one of my clients is a stutterer, and, and he started using, and, and he has literally stopped stuttering. I, it's not like I have anything.
All from a natural plant grown, and nobody's added any chemical to, at all whatsoever.
Personally, I'm sure I have somebody buy something from a stuttering, and divide on this. I have, because you have no idea what place.
We don't, we don't. Russian roulette every day. Now, think about how many folks are actually using it for medicine, not to get high, and that don't have the money for a medical use card, or the transportation to go get a medical use card. So they're playing Russian roulette every day, just to get out of a little bit of pain of a natural plant that is totally regaled by the state of New York. And now off the Schedule One progress.
And well, we can be tested.
Exactly, you cannot test for job requirement for marijuana in the state of New York. Companies have their own policies, but it's illegal to test for marijuana.
But we're not allowed to use that.
That's you, that's you.
And I'll, and I'll say this for everyone, I'm talking as a resident, uh, I'm on the school board, but I'm talking as a resident today. Are the levels of the products sold today stronger than they were thirty years ago? Is it easier to get hooked on the products used today than it was thirty years ago?
No, I, I, sorry.
Oh, that's fine, that's your answer, that's good. There's a lot of studies from around the country, not so much New York State, because it hasn't been here long enough. Other states are having issues with addictions, a lot of reports on teenage addiction. Our school goes to twelve and thirteen-year-olds, there's not a lot of studies on twelve and thirteen-year-olds hooked on cannabis. But there are studies showing that cannabis use in teenagers causes all kinds of issues, psychiatric issues, uh, with direct correlations to the brain development and cannabis use. I think this facility is too close to the school. I think we have a lot of middle schoolers currently who are vaping and using products that are horrible to their systems, and, and do all kinds of damage, and we don't even know the long-term effects. California is under legislation right now.
Yeah, we're not selling. We will be tested, we will be selling tested cannabis babes from the state of New York, but tested, yes.
California is looking at legislation right now to put warning labels that use of the product causes psychiatric disorders, are you aware of that?
No.
Um, it's gonna come here also. I, I think the proximity to the school and the age group that's using the product, and I, I'm not saying that you're doing anything illegal. I actually think it's probably a good thing, uh, if the money actually filters back down to the, the community the way it's supposed to. I'm not convinced it is. But all that being said, being, being six hundred feet from the entrance to the school, I think is too close. I think your facility is too close, I think we're enticing ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen-year-olds to use product. They should have no use, no, no use being around at all.
That's something you should take up with the state of New York, they draw, they made these guidelines.
I understand, I read the guidelines also, I think the way they, they classify it is also incorrect, because the state education department uses the boundary of the district as the entrance, not the school door, like they do for liquor. And I think the classification is actually wrong, it's the front entrance to the doors what they're using for measurement, right?
Front entrance of the door, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, the way the state education department writes the law, it actually says the school boundary, but all, that's not us, that's not for us to say.
Right, that's not for us either, even these babes in Southern California.
I'm just letting you know, I think it's a problem, it's too close to the district.
So, let me word it this way. You condone street drugs in Manass. You would rather, instead of having a legal dispensary that is tested product here in your community, you would rather have illicit drugs on the street that could have fentanyl, E. coli, and a four thousand cannabis. That could be in that product.
I'm sure, I'm sure, nothing I said led to that. My, my expression was, being five hundred feet from the entrance to the school is too close, enticing for children who make bad decisions.
You just set those rules up.
I know you accept the rules, and I'm trying to express the fact, I think that location is too close.
Do your middle school students go to the liquor store?
I can, and let me, let me, I'm talking as a resident, please don't put me on the spot as trying to answer for the district. The district has problems with vaping and drug use, and this is K through eight, this is pre-K through eight, this is to eighth graders.
Where are they getting?
They're gonna get at the same place that they're gonna get the illegal marijuana.
How many of us in here, when the drinking age was eighteen for some of us, twenty-one for some of us? How many drank underage before you were allowed to? Most all of us, correct? Good majority, I know I sure did, and our children are gonna be the same way. Our children are gonna get marijuana, they are gonna get it, and I'm just, we're not selling it to them. But what we're doing is we're taking the illicit market off the street and putting a tested facility here that the state has already approved. The Village of Manass has already opted in for, we're just trying to be cordial and not blindside the municipality like the last meeting when we were here. We wanna be completely upfront with our history and business in a small community just like this. And you folks can call and ask about Joe Kelly in a community that's the same size as he here, and find out have I brought anything negative to the community? How many, I have a liquor store, not a single underage sale, none of those kids are coming to my place. We do have the same problem you have, vape and tobacco in our school system, but I don't sell those products. Those are for all the illicit bodegas that are moving a lot of those products, which we are shutting down. You will see, as soon as we can get this location as permitted, you will have, these folks, the police department will be contacted by the office cannabis management with a drug task force that will come up here and shut down every illicit store that is in this neighborhood. In this town, the next town, and the next town pass. I have an approved location in White House, they've already been up that direction. They have an approved location in Queensberry, they've already shut down four stores down there. So it's a way, an avenue to also, if you wanna think of it this way, you know, you, you may have a problem with the kids in school, but you've still got those kids. If they get fentanyl and marijuana that's out on these streets, you won't have those kids at the school the next day. That's the more important issue here, is the fact that there is these drugs out on our streets, right now as we speak. And you could get them, I could get them, our children could get them, we at least need to clean that up. And like I said, the property is already approved by the office cannabis management in the state of New York, and the municipality of Manass opted in for sales, not on consumption, but for sales.
Right, consumption is not allowed, just like, just like if it was a bar, they can't buy their product and stay there and smoke it happily. There's a question in the back by the.
Oh, sorry.
Well, my question, I do have an issue with being so close to. Is there an alternative location that you might have looked at, or if they're outside of the, so, I mean, just, you know? Yeah, they, you had a list that you wrote, all of that, but does the location have to be that close?
We put in for an approved location, we have, as, as shareholders, we're looking for locations throughout the entire state. This happens to be a location, you guys have, I believe, I'm going by third party, I believe you only have three locations in Manass. One will not work, one is the business in, and I'm not the kind of businessman that would go in and ask and try to boot somebody else out, pay their rent, or buy out their links to go in and run another business in a small community. I would not be doing that. This is the location for them. This location follows the rules set aside by the state of New York and the office cannabis management. I mean, you're asking, I mean, I don't know the exact location, how, how many liquor stores, or beer stores, or tobacco stores are in the neighborhood of that school, but you're asking me to live in my business there, but what about the businesses that are already open in that neighborhood that are selling alcohol or tobacco and advertising in that school area? Why are they allowed to do it, but we're not, and we're having a tested facility where we can't advertise outside of our business? It's not like you're gonna see they pop these outside our store, that's not how it works. It's a suit and tie business, it's a respectable business. You know, some may consider it very close to the pharmaceutical industry. When it's done right, the testing rocks. Oh, they can't come in our store, the marijuana is our twenty one, it's a different scenario. You can't bring your child into, like, in a liquor store, you can bring your child in and buy, purchase your bottle of. You can't walk in by dispensaries or any dispensary in New York with your child and purchase your product. You can, you can go in the store and buy a beer with your kid in your hand, or tobacco, but you cannot do that with the cannabis in our store. That's the only, uh, that, that I think.
But the tobacco, I know that most stores that sell tobacco, the state does perform state operations there to make sure that these stores are following the guidelines, making sure that mine are not being able to purchase cigarettes in the store. Does your community go under that guideline where the state actually performs state operations?
Absolutely. Absolutely, it was about three days ago, George, I believe, they put out, they just changed the rules or regulations. When they were shutting these illicit shops down, they couldn't do anything. They could take their product, take their cash, and that was that. Now, as of three days ago, it's. Now, as of three days ago, it's a ten thousand dollar fine per day. Second offense is twenty thousand dollars per day for these illicit shops and stores.
All right. Is there any more questions?
Yesterday would have been good. We're, we are trying to shoot for delivery in July. We would like to have the store open no later than the end of September. And as soon as we have our approval here, then we're pretty much, oh, go. We've got a construction crew coming in on the twelfth. Right. And we, once, we've got a few things with the building permit and the special use permit. If everything goes right on our end, we plan on starting to build out on the twelfth. We can do very minimal to the inside of the building. I don't mean, I don't mean very minimal. The store doesn't need to be fully done for us to start delivery. We can put our safety mechanisms into, into practice and our vault and things of that nature. And following the guidelines from the state, we can start delivery immediately. And then obviously the tax dollars start immediately also.
I just ask one question. This is more to, and I don't know if I can ask you guys questions, but we talked about all the protections within the store and then some of the things that happen when somebody leaves. It's the law and it's things that are enforced by law enforcement, not by the store. Has the village had some discussions or, or have worked through the process? If there are issues that arise, does the police department have the resources that they need to deal with those? We're talking about dealing with potential issues on the other side of the village. So have those discussions happened? And, you know, are there going to be additional resources that you're thinking about considering if something were to happen?
And there is these same concerns when the liquor store next to Mobile was going to open. And my knowledge has been very limited trouble down there.
Yeah, larcenies.
But the same concerns happened then that are told tonight. So I think they're well equipped to handle whatever happens within this village.
And mind you, even without the dispensary, these offices are still handling the marijuana problem on your streets right now. And they're not being, and they're not being paid for it.
And the question was without judgment.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, she's trying to say in general.
On the other end of the village.
Tonight we're talking about a memorandum, understanding with the other agencies or, you know, warily.
Is, is there any, is there rules like there are with liquor stores in terms of we couldn't have one like right next door?
Yep.
Or how many dispensaries are we going to have in Manans?
This is it. This is it. Well, I might be speaking a little out of order.
That's your decision.
I must know. No, there's fourteen licenses in the entire capital region. And right now, there's only, there's only gonna be, right now, for the first two years, I believe, there's only gonna be three hundred licenses. Down the road, there will be more, but they have to be at least, I believe it was two thousand feet away from another dispensary. But with my liquor store, under those guidelines with the S L A, nobody can come into my community unless the, the state does an audit and checks and sees if, if there is a requirement for another store. Is there enough of a population for my particular location? In White House, we'd have to have another twenty-five hundred people before they would allow another dispenser or another liquor store to come in. These dispensaries are going to be the same way. The state's going to control where they can be and not on top of each other.
I'm just saying, so I'm hoping to get past two more years. So I guess the question would be for the village, obviously, how many would we allow? Twenty years is a, if it's a.
Oh, yeah, now, that's up to them, what they, what they decide.
They need a special use permit as part of our new code, so it would go before the new board to decide. And make the determination.
I don't, I, I wouldn't think that somebody would want to invest that kind of money to be right next door because the pool here is only, I mean, in twenty miles, you've got about eighty thousand or eighty-eight thousand people. But the more we put in here, you're gonna dilute that pool. And these folks, you know, to set up a dispensary, you're talking well over a half a million dollars. And this is a business that is brand new to start right off the bat. You know, it's, it's one heck of an investment. I don't see somebody else wanting to come in in a location like this to double up. I mean, there happens to be so many connected.
You know how many people try to get liquor licenses for retail establishments in the state of New York? And probably even within this village, but they're probably denied because of the distance issues.
Yeah, that's, that's the regulations. That's what I'm trying to explain to you.
So I'm just saying, I, I, I'm just saying, it's not, things can change. That's all I'm saying.
Well, we follow into the same guidelines. Liquor laws haven't changed since prohibition in New York State. It's the same application today as it was when prohibition got old. I'm only talking because I've been through the entire process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. So I have a quick question. It's not for you. It's for the police. I just want to find out what the marijuana problems in the village are to date with young people, with other people. Are there problems that you've dealt with?
Yeah, I mean, we've dealt with issues, you know, with marijuana being in bars, people being impaired, but nothing more than we deal with alcohol. It's sometimes.
About the same?
Yeah.
Alcohol and marijuana?
Yeah.
You know, and you find it among the young people, with school age kids, kids.
Not our school. I mean, our school, we do have issues, but not, not a lot. I mean, it's on K through eight, so we don't have many issues. Although we do.
Okay. I'm just trying to find out what our baseline is, so not many issues. Okay. Good. Thank you.
All right. So Steve, do we close the public hearing and then just wait until next week?
Well, we're not gonna close, close.
I have to suspend it.
Yeah, hold over till July third if we could.
Yeah. Okay. I can do that. Yeah, without the engineer here, I know the engineer, I know Matt had some, some comments that I think are number one, important for the board to consider. Number two, I think there was an issue and understand that you don't want to cross that. The security, especially in terms of cash, added in general form. But there might be some questions that the chief has that he can answer for the board to address those.
Okay. So I guess we're gonna just come out of it?
Maybe I can come out of the public hearing and leave it open.
To be continued next, my next.
A continuance for.
July third.
July third.
July third.
All right. Thank you very much.
We're also holding operators. We will be on the facility working ourselves.
Bring examples for us, sir?
It's not funny.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That means a lot.
So before we go to number two on the agenda, I actually want to start, I want to move up to number fifteen while we have a captive audience. I have a, I have a proclamation that was approved at the last meeting and I want to read it out loud for everybody. It's a resolution declaring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, Mayor Megan Grenier Day in the Village of Manans. Whereas in March two thousand and five, Village of Manans resident Megan, Meg Grenier answered the call for residents willing to serve as Village of Manans trustee, winning election to her first public office after having created the popular concerts in the park series. And whereas two years later, Meg decided to run for mayor of the Village of Manans, hoping to improve the quality of life for residents and bring more businesses to the village, but came in second place by only a handful of votes. And whereas four years later, Meg decided to run again for mayor of the Village of Manans, winning the election, becoming the first female mayor of the village. And whereas eighteen years after she was first elected to public office, Meg Grenier has done just what she promised to do and more, wrapping up a career of remarkable achievements in the Village of Manans, Towne Colony, Albany County, and the region that will live on for generations to come. And whereas during her tenure as mayor, Meg Grenier presided over the replacement of a significant portion of the water mains, repaving of almost all village streets, improvements to the Sage Estate Trail System in Ganser Smith Park, the building of a gazebo that has become the centerpiece of Ganser Smith Park, purchase of the former Key Bank Building to become the new village office, purchase of two new fire trucks, and many other major projects. And whereas in all of her interactions, Mayor Grenier treated all residents and staff with respect and compassion, making all feel welcome and listened to. And whereas after two decades of being the face of Manans, Mayor Grenier leaves office as one of the longest tenured and most distinguished elected officials in the village. And whereas words alone cannot convey the gratitude owed to Mayor Meg Grenier for the countless hours of work she has put in to making Manans a better place to live and for its residents and workers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Seth H. Harris, deputy mayor of the Village of Manans, upon a majority vote of the board of trustees, do hereby proclaim June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to be Mayor Megan Grenier Day in the Village of Manans and thank Mayor Grenier for her two decades of public service, while wishing her all the best for a happy, healthy, and well-earned retirement. And on a similar, similar token, I also want to thank trustee Diane Foley. This is her last meeting before retiring from the board after eight very productive years on the board. She's literally always sat next to me the whole time and has given opinion and support on so many different matters. And I can't thank her enough for all of her, her guidance over the years. But it was important that we do this now while we have a captive audience.
All right. Next on the agenda is open forum.
All right. So several things. First, I'm glad to see the Manans Public Library Rehabilitation Work Project, including one ramp in front of the parking lot, finally officially got done, you know, during the second week of May of this year. So I thank whoever done the work. I thank them for doing it. Second, while driving or walking on Tillingas Avenue, I observed Tillingas Avenue having one large bump on that village street aiming toward fourteen Tillingas Avenue housing property. I reported this problem to Don Hannigan and D W S through the police. Third, now during early night of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, when we had our village board meeting, after the village board meeting got done, I observed the lights in the courtroom on two fifty Broadway building were left on and no one was in the courtroom and no one was in the court office, so I turned off the lights myself. I'd done that to save electricity. If nobody's gonna use the lights, we should cut them off. Now, fourth, now May eleventh, while driving on Broadway here in Manans, I observed one area, west, west side of Broadway, between Cemetery Avenue and one bus stop. That's a former Walgreens drugstore being flooded up with litter, with a large amount of litter. So I reported the problem to the Manans Police. So a few days later, our public works guys pick up the litter on the west side of Broadway in the area I just mentioned. So I wish to thank P J, Public Works Guys for getting the job done. And while checking the men's room in the restroom building of Manans Little League Baseball Center to see if they need any supplies, so I brought the soap supply issue to Don Hannigan. So our public works guys installed new regular soap dispensers and apricot dispenser, which I'm glad they've done that. Plus I brought four hand soap sanitizers to both restroom. So I had Karen go to women's room and I done the men's room. I, I'm happy to hear, see that those large white dairy storage tanks at Mimblets Dairy Farm Processing Facility were recently primed and repainted, wiped. And early evening of May seventeenth, while driving on Oakland Avenue, that's east and west part of the street, I observed that there was broken glass, so I swept up the broken glass in the east and west part of the village street. In addition, I also picked up broken glass on Hart's Lane while picking up litter. And nine, I support Manans decision in regarding repairs to the P D W truck street. Now, I'd like to know, what's the total cost for that, to fix that truck? Does anybody know?
We didn't, we didn't fix it. We replaced it.
Oh, you did. So all right, well, I think the answer. Now, on May nineteenth, while using the men's room at the restroom building next to Pavilion Building at Ganser Smith Park, I saw one baseball cap and one nylon being left in the toilet in the men's room. So I removed that stuff from the toilet and I threw it in the wake paper basket. I did tell Don Hannigan about this issue as P D W through the Manans Police. When anybody puts stuff in the toilet and it gets flushed down, you know, it results in costly, slow, and time-consuming repairs for toilets. And one thing, now I understand you're gonna have some discussion about repaving project for Manans Road. Now, just so you know, I urge the village board, please, let's get this Manans Road repaired, particularly the area between Broadway and the D N H railroad track because it's in poor condition, just like several other boroughs, with bumps, cracks, potholes, and ruts. Thank you very much for letting me speak, Meg. And of course, I wish you well in your retirement. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
You go.
Okay. First, I'd like to thank all the trustees for putting together the Oasis letter, which was included in the agenda tonight. I think it was really important and, and I appreciate the fact that you're able to reach consensus on that and share the concerns with Oasis. I'm equally concerned with the fact that the Oasis reply didn't address many of those concerns or any of those concerns. So my concern is that the letter that was sent to Oasis, the response with a non-response to the letter. And so, you know, the question was, what is your response to their response?
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe I can, Chuck, how are you?
Good.
Couple of things. We received a letter from Fusion's attorneys addressing the issue of the resolution that discussed the possibility of a moratorium. And obviously, you're concerned with that. So what I've advised and what I've been talking with various members, I need to do some research on the issue of, we're gonna talk about the moratorium. I need to do some research to see whether or not moratoriums of that kind with respect to especially what you, the primary concern was men's dog, whether or not those have been instituted by any other towns or villages or even cities. And if so, whether or not they've been challenged. I certainly don't want to put the village on a path to getting sued. So I'm, I just, I'm, I'm in the middle of a trial right now. I'm responding to the way the city. Gotcha. Whether or not they're available, that, that's not at any moment. So I, I've spoken with, with the mayor about, I think it's something that needs to be addressed in executive session since it involves a potential legal issue and in the context of what a response would be to the Oasis letter. Having said that, there is nothing that keeps, and I know a lot of people have a lot of different views on whether or not, I read the Oasis letter and I was like, well, they glossed over the primary points that were being raised in the letter. There's nothing that would keep any citizen or group of citizens from sending a letter in response as well.
Right.
In addition to what the board.
And I know that some people have, but I would encourage everybody in here that hasn't sent a letter to Oasis yet to do so. I got all their contact information at manans.net if you want, you know, if you want their contact information and who the individuals are to email.
So whatever the board decides, I don't, I don't make those determinations. I provide them with, you know, advising counsel and then they'll totally decide what to do. But that's, that's what's staying for that right now, Chuck.
Right. And Steve, I, I appreciate the fact that there could be some issues with moratorium. Now, I, I think, I think there's a couple of other avenues to look at as well here. Now, the board initially bought into a counseling service, not an O T P, right? So now the question comes back to this. Were they approved for a counseling service or were they approved for an O T P? And when you look at the village code, page one fifty-five of the building code, you can see what constitutes a medical facility. And I believe that a. And I believe that a case could be made that an OTP falls outside of a medical facility. And I think that that's one avenue that you can take a look at. Another avenue could be if they came in and sold us a counseling service, and they were expecting all along to do an OTP, that you can actually pull their CO for, let me see what the ground, section 122 or 1202.5D, that a CO issued based on incorrect information can be suspended or revoked. Now, that's if it's determined that Fusion Recovery has misrepresented its intended operation in any way.
Chuck, just, I just wanted to say one thing about that. So I did submit a foil to Oasis for a copy of the application in April, which they said I would have in May, and they sent me a notice in May saying, okay, it'll be in June. And then I got a notice this month that said, no, we'll send it to you July 12. So I want to see if they'll hold to that, because, so to answer that question, we have to have a copy of that application, which is now coming out three months.
Right.
Since I foiled it. But in any case, just so before we can answer that question, I know, so let me just ask you a question. By counseling, is that the 822, because they were approved for 822 and not?
I don't think that they're strong opposition to the 822, and I could be wrong.
Is that, is that counseling? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, all right. Yeah, and that's what they approved for.
So.
They were certified for.
That's what the letter.
A lot of these.
Yeah. 822 would be the counseling. OTP is outpatient treatment. Yeah, thank you. Opioid treatment program. So, so yes. So I think, I think that there are, I think that you can take a look at both the issuance of the CO and the building code itself, and make an argument that they fall outside of those parameters. So if the board agrees that this is worth looking into, I'd like, I'd like them to direct you to do that.
We'll, we'll look at everything. And then we'll find them with, I have to get Lyle involved, obviously, because Lyle was kind of the first line of defense.
Yeah. Okay. Those were my suggestions, and I think, I think a lot of people in this room have approached me with these concerns, and I'm kind of the mouthpiece here. I'm the pain in the ass, but, you know, hopefully, hopefully I'm representing the interests of the community.
If you'd like to share that with, in an email to Lyle and me?
Yes.
And I will file up, I'll follow up with Lyle.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right, good, thank you.
The one part that I was really concerned about in their response letter was that they clearly stated that the LGU and Oasis was assured that neither the mayor nor the Village of Manans Board objected to the proposal. That's what your entire letter was trying to explain to them, that you did, that you had never made a stance, and it was misrepresented at the meeting that Tim and Brian went to, that the board had approved it, and the mayor had approved it. So, I mean, writing back to them to basically say, did you read our letter? Because our letter is completely around this one part that you said it is not. So we obviously didn't approve it. And then my thought would be, who cares if they sue? Wouldn't a lawsuit also open them up to the fallacies that they had in their application? And that they misrepresented a letter from our, from our village, you know, giving them a CO as a board approval? I mean, there's so many fallacies in their application that were glossed over by Oasis and the LGU. I would almost welcome a lawsuit. I would bring in the Attorney General's Office to say, this was wrong from the get-go. They, the letter from the senator that supposedly supported them was rescinded, because she couldn't support them, it wasn't her jurisdiction. And that was, it was left in their application that they had support from the senator. So the Oasis and the LGU both took false information and granted them approval. And it is good that they stated that, that it's an 822 outpatient program, not an opioid treatment program, as often mistaken. And so they did spell that out, which was good. And the moratorium, I know it was passed, because I was at that meeting, was supposed to be not so that they couldn't provide treatment, it was because, it was so that they can't administer the medication on-site and give take-home doses. And that's what I think the community was behind and excited about, was because we're not against the counseling program. We want people to get therapy. We're concerned with a line of people wanting to get methadone and causing problems, and what that draws sometimes to a community. And that's what I think we need to continue to fight for and stand behind. Again, I'm not saying I want people to sue us as a village, but it opens them up to everything as well. Let's open up the books, let's see everything.
I think we're talking about two separate, two different things, Steve. When I mentioned the letter from Von Chenick, they were primarily addressing the issue of, in a general sense, the village adopting a moratorium for, I'm just going to use, I'll say methadone treatment, or whatever. And that's, that's what I have to address, and that's what I have to get some advice and counsel on.
No, but I'm just saying.
Which is separate from the other, I don't think there's any discussion that I'm aware of where we're discussing suing Oasis or the state of New York, or starting an Article 78 or something like that.
So, just to be clear, we didn't pass a moratorium. We passed a resolution to explore a moratorium, because that needs a local law and it needs a public hearing. So we didn't do that, we didn't pass it last week. We passed a resolution to look into it.
I think the community thought.
Well, I think, I think I mentioned at the meeting that it was going to have to be a local law, but as a stopgap measure, there was going to be a resolution passed authorizing the board to start the process of looking into whether or not a local law was possible for a moratorium. And if so, there has to be a public, there actually has to be a public, a notice, public hearing.
I think what the public heard was that you were going to pass a moratorium to prevent for at least 12 months not being able to administer the medications on-site, so that you could take that time to explore if there was fallacies in their application. And if they did this correctly, I would have to, I would have to foil the meeting minutes.
I know Seth specifically asked if we didn't need a public hearing on it. So if you remember hearing about.
It would have to be, a moratorium's got to be a local law.
So is it more, I'm sorry.
So I think, but the question at the time was, a local law was needed to change the zoning requirements.
That as well.
But I just believe that at the time when you mentioned the moratorium, at least when I was here, that any discussion was that you're going to have a public hearing on the moratorium.
I've said that several times. And said that several times. You can watch.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying my perception.
Okay.
If you remember.
You mentioned the issue of the used car dealerships. I don't know if there was a hearing in that situation, but that was a prior, you know, obviously precedent.
Yeah, I was giving it as an example.
So is the intent meant to be a moratorium or not?
Steve was looking into how.
You're concerned about being sued?
I would know, if we did one.
You want to do it right. So the question of doing it right is to see whether or not other municipalities have done it, as opposed to reinventing the wheel, following suit with what others have done.
Is there a timeline on that?
As quickly as possible.
I'm just saying, just give them the amounts of.
And if you remember at the, at the meeting last, I guess it was two weeks ago.
Yeah.
I had asked Don, maybe you'll hear, or maybe you weren't here, or whatever, but I had asked Don specifically, I knew that there had been moratoriums passed with respect to, I think, these businesses and car lots, because we were doing the Broadway Court. There was a study being done at that time, and I asked Don, and he was good enough, he sent it, sent it over to me the following day. And it does, it require, it requires a local law, which automatically requires a public hearing.
I guess the question I want to counsel is, given the expeditious nature of this issue, and given you're under trial, does it mean that you should hire additional counsel to address this issue?
No, I, no.
I'm just an off.
No, no, I understand, and I think that's a fair question. I, I got.
It's two weeks.
I got at least, oh, trust me, I've been working on it.
Okay.
Okay. This week, I will tell you until Thursday, I'm going to be busy. In fact, I told the mayor I've got to meet a witness at 8:30 tonight. Maybe we'll be finished, maybe we won't, but, no, just so happen said. I have to start a trial today and.
I appreciate your good efforts. I'm just saying, I just think there's obviously an issue, maybe there's other people in your firm can help, I don't know.
But we also rely on Matt, and unfortunately, he's got something going on right now as well.
So I was concerned about the moratorium situation, so I brought up the other thing, the CO and the building thing, which I think, and I could be wrong, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I think is a more expeditious path if we can get a determination on that. It's like, hey, we approved you guys for a medical office or a medical facility, is what it's called, and this, this methadone clinic doesn't fall within those boundaries. And we just, you know, we just want you guys to know that if your plan is to open up this OTP, that was never, yeah, that was not part of what's zoned for here, so tough cookies. And then let us, let them sue us over that. I think that might be the best path. I don't know.
We can discuss it.
Send it to me and Lyle.
Yeah.
We'll follow up on that, Chuck. Thank you.
It says right here in their letter back to us that you can shut them down for co-virations. It says right here for part 13, that the local municipality has jurisdiction to do exactly what Chuck was saying, is get a permit if they're going to operate outside, what the understanding was, and what they were supposed to be doing with the first place.
Well, yeah, I think we need a copy of Tim's setting.
I'll send, I'll send you, I'll send you everything I've got.
Yeah, and we needed, we need a copy of the application.
So can you clarify for me, I'm a little confused. So now that Fusion knows that we're pretty much against them having OTP, so what's to prevent them from going to Oasis, submitting for a license for OTP, and getting it done before all this gets straightened out, and the next thing you know, we got to go to court? You might.
I'll just hazard a guess. I would assume that Oasis is well aware of the uproar that's been caused in Manans by what Oasis did, without getting the requisite, or asking for the requisite community support. I'd be very, I would be very surprised, although it is the state of New York, I would be very surprised if Oasis were to continue down that road without getting some input from the village.
I don't know, they already think that you gave approval from their letter. That's the point I'm trying to make, is their letter was very clear that there was no opposition from the mayor or the board, but your letter was opposition, and it was signed by all of you, and they didn't care. They basically said there was no known opposition from the mayor or the board. Isn't the mayor and the board the ones that wrote and sent the letter? So I wouldn't put anything past the state or the LGU. They don't want to admit that there was an error, that they didn't do any due diligence.
That's quite timely, that's a soft word.
Exactly. And that's why I think the community thought you were passing a moratorium to put a pause on it for 12 months while we were able to explore. That was the impression I had in every single person that I left this room talking to. They were all like, at least we have time now for it to be explored, and they won't be able to do what they, what they are basically forcing themselves into this community to do. We all left here with that thought, not what you're saying today.
To be fair, Steve, the first time a moratorium was brought up was at the meeting two weeks ago. And there was a, that I'm aware of. And there was a discussion at that point in time, in terms of what the process needed to be in order to enact a lawful moratorium. I had indicated that I felt that there was a local law that was required, and anytime, as you know, you said on the board, anytime a local law is, the board seeks to pass it, there has to be a public hearing. Specifically asked John for what we were two former moratoriums that we had addressed. Seth had mentioned it as well. So, you know, to take it as, you know, black letter law that that resolution established the moratorium, we said, it's something we need to look at to make sure that we do it appropriately and properly. And I'm telling you now, that a resolution is not, is not the stopgap. It's a bridge. It's a bridge that has engendered some response from Fusion's attorney, but it is, it's a bridge. It's not, it's not exactly what we need. We need a local law. Okay? And that's what I'm looking at right now to address, to make sure that if that's what the board decides to do, that you do it in a proper way.
Steve, I have a question for you. I read the same letter that I think everybody here read, and what I took away from that was that Oasis confirmed that this is the law, the law's being followed, that Fusion did due diligence in going through their process of being vetted, and that they came out with approvals, and that there was nothing, no stain on their reputation, that they are who they say they are. And to me, it sounded like Oasis did answer the questions that were posed in the letter that we sent. And maybe I'm wrong, but I think it would be a real waste of energy to, at this point, incite some kind of lawsuit that the taxpayer would have to pay, and endless, endless meetings of energy spent on lawsuits, when this village has so much energy to go forward. It's got two new trustees, and I think I remember Molly Harland's literature, the whole talk being things, ideas, programs, thoughts, ideas going forward. That to me excites me, things going forward, not getting stuck in the muck. And what I have to say is, I don't know if anybody read the Times Union today, I do, and I did. And it's all, the front page deals with the opioid crisis, and the fact that it's not going away anytime soon. It's getting worse. And we can either be part of the solution, or we can be part of the problem. Now, I feel that we all know people who have been troubled with addictions, and we need to have treatment for them. And they're not, they're not suggesting even a safe injection site. They're talking about this triage treatment program. So I don't understand what the big brouhaha is. I think they answered all the questions about this being a very safe and well-thought-out process. So if anything, my reaction to the Oasis letter was, oh my God, I think we owe them an apology.
Well, I think you're in the, I think you're in the majority.
Excuse me. I'd like you to talk. I'd like you to talk. This room.
And now I'm responding.
Stop, stop. We're not going to do this again. She's got a right to speak. She doesn't have to be heckled for what she's saying. She's got a much right to her opinion, as everybody else in the room does.
I've been quiet the whole time. And I want to say that this room is filled with people who believe the way you believe, Chuck Price. There are a lot of people out there that haven't been summoned to this meeting through all of your Facebook connections, and there are people who do believe like I believe, that I want to help people get back up on their feet. Okay?
It's red herring. I agree, we're in agreement. Okay? We're in agreement.
Okay. So my, my final words are, and I'm asking Steve to tell me if you read the letter that Oasis said this is the law, Fusion is following the law, they've been vetted, they've been approved, and that's when I got out of it. Did you get something different?
You know, ultimately, this is a boring decision. I can't speak for the board.
No, I'm asking you what you read into it, because that seemed clear.
I, it doesn't matter what I think. I mean, honestly, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what I think. Although I thought that they were responsive, or not responsive, to, you know, to the, to the concerns that were raised in the letter. I think the board is in a position to address that particular issue. And I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, and I don't, I wouldn't want to take a position that is contrary to what the board as a group feels. And that's something that we need to discuss, but in executive session and light of the letter that we got from Von Chenick.
Does anybody else on the board get in, respond to anything?
I am not going to speak about it, because we've been invited by council to talk about it in an executive session.
I'm not trying to dodge or answer. It's just, I'm trying to preserve, you know.
You are, and the legal.
Laura, in the legal, if there's a legal ramification as well.
Paul, Laura had her hand up first.
With all due respect, this is Harris, correct?
Yes, it is. I think that's irrelevant. I'm a resident here and I have been for 45 years.
It is relevant because Seth never told us which side it was actually on during the other meetings, you know, whether he was sworn to duty or not.
You, Seth and I may have the same, or we may have different points of view or not, and that's it as we do.
With all due respect, so Fusion itself brought up a great point. This is going to be a high end facility. What's different from this than from the community underway vote is that this is a private, private investors that are funding this. So if we have this time, then I would like to solicit the board to find out if any family members or any of your members of your family are invested in any way with Fusion there.
No, no.
No.
Got it all. No, not at all.
Because it is a private company and Chuck's got a good point. It isn't very caring. They're trying to involve emotion with making $1.4 million. So business is business. This is theirs. Business has one thing. They want to make money. And for one minute, don't you think the people that are running that company really care about their clients? Because they don't. They're carrying.
Every single doctor is for profit.
Every single doctor is for profit.
So it's no different than a hospital. So, I mean, to, to say they're for profit. And my father, when he practiced medicine, wasn't for profit. I, I mean, every doctor, unless they're working, you know, as a, as a nonprofit, is profit.
Not a doctor. The owners of Fusion Therapy, just stood up here and not doctors.
So I just, I just, I don't want to make the, it's, every doctor's for profit. And we all know that they're pretty successful at it. So, I mean.
I'm not here to judge every doctor. I'm just here to make it a point that that is privately funded.
Yes.
Investors. And it's a business 101. And here they're trying to bring emotion into it and it shouldn't be. It's about, are they running the business? Are they running the business according to law? They lied on their applications. Can't wait to get a copy.
Why do you say that? How do you know they lied?
Pretty much from the, the video. Did you watch the?
I watched everything. Yes.
Yeah, the fact that they were misrepresenting on their application the support that they had locally by Senator Hinchey. And the rest of the people who I said were supporting them, including the mayor, according to this letter that the mayor personally approved, approved their application where she sat and she did not personally.
I think that's getting off the track. And again, I'm going to say, this is the business of public health. It's not.
Public health.
Public health.
Is the, this is not being paid for by taxpayers. This is privately owned and it's a private company. It's not publicly owned. It's not like the other places that we got.
I just wanted to say, in response to the thing with Senator Hinchey, in response to the piece about Senator Hinchey?
Yes.
The response that Oasis provided was that no letter of support was even necessary. That was that response.
Paul.
I make a request that we end this unadvertised public hearing where nowhere appears on.
This isn't a public hearing. This is open forum.
Pardon?
This isn't a public hearing. It's open forum.
For what's turning into a public hearing? What I'm saying is we have business to perform here tonight. This is not going to get settled here tonight. I can tell. But listen, the residents delicious history for years. I've seen this stuff coming up. We have, and that council was giving us best advice. And we'll continue to do that. You have a ward who's been in service now, some of you for a long time. Know more about this than anybody. You should be allowed to do your work with state's advice. And when that's done, present it to the village and see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? We're open forum. Yes, Steve.
Glad to leave you Meg on your terms.
Thank you.
Very much.
Yes, second.
Thank you. All right. We in a motion to approve the June 5th board meeting minutes?
Second.
All favor.
Warrant number 24, we had to point check 14193 because of the payment. Warrant number 26 encumbered general, $83,000.
Say again.
Fifty eight, $58,828.57. Water, $11,888.95, totaling $70,717.
No source.
No source. No source.
Seventy thousand, seven hundred and seventeen.
Seventeen fifty-two. Warrant number two. Water, $65,000.
Yeah, that's, say one again.
Under four, 422. Let me start again. Warrant number two, general, $422,564.04. Water, $65,647.05. Sewer, $52,254.36, totaling $540,254.36. Payroll number one. Payroll number two. $100,760.62, totaling $199,761.71, sixty cents.
Second.
All favor.
We have a bunch of transfers. $207,000 from quarter of the clerks to court officers, $790.
Forty.
Forty. Seven, Jesus, what am I doing? $740.
Turn off the lights.
Court on call, $210. Part-time overtime, $1,120. $18,600 from the consultant to contractual. $440. Light, power and gas, $17,590. Activity supplies, thirty. Hardtime patrol, $6,285. Supervisor, $1,000. Police overtime, $3,650. Police DWI patrol, $680. Police oil and gas, $907. Uniform allowance, $48. Communication repairs, $115. Administrative expense, $115. Fire department vehicle maintenance, $1,092. Miscellaneous equipment, $420. $222 for miscellaneous. Five hundred, or five, $450 for gas, oil and and safety inspections from fire inspector. $230 to fire safety inspection, building inspector, $230. Street, Norman, $1770. Foreman, $350. Street supplies, $665. Street, street gas and oil, $750. Fifty-five. Garage, light, power and gas, $925. Building maintenance, $925. Continency account, $600, $600, $102.
Six thousand.
$6,102. Gas, power and light, $4,980. Youth, youth instructors. $317. Zoning personnel services, $190. Refuge labor, $615. Insurance, $151. To refuge, gas power, gas and oil, 81. Refuge vehicle maintenance, $70. On the water fund from the contingency account. $11,810 administrative gas power and oil, gas power, light, power and gas, $11,810.
Make a motion.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have a resolution for the fiscal year to cover the engineering costs?
Yeah, sorry. I was trying to get this in earlier, Meg. Chief Ogden's not here tonight. He's at a meeting that I'm glad I'm not at. But we wanted to thank you for our last 12 years. Been a huge supporter of the fire department. It was at our ups and downs internally. But the fire department is leading you in a great spot. We just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Is this the one, um, abilities?
The treasurer requests.
The treasurer requests to amend the 2223.
Do you want me to read that?
Yeah, please.
Okay. The treasurer requests the board amend the 2022, 2023 fiscal year general and water budgets as follows. Based upon resolutions number 230145, authorizing converting all village owned buildings to LED lighting at a cost of $34,582. National grid has added the charges to the final bill for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year for the following accounts. A dot 1620 dot 0412, A dot 7110 dot 0412, and F dot 8310 dot 0412. Therefore, the treasurer is requesting that the following amendments be made to the 2022, 2023 fiscal year budgets. Account number A dot 1620 dot 0412 by $117,600. Account number A dot 7110 dot 0412 by $50, by $5,132. And account number F dot 8310 dot 0412 by $11,850 for a total of $34,582. The treasurer also needs authorization, authorization to transfer $34,582 from the ARPA funds to pay for the conversion. This was discussed with the village's accountants and was approved by them. I, I move that we make these, that we make these amendments. Second.
All favors.
Aye.
The treasurer wanted me to report to the board that there was a typo on the budget transfers on the meeting of 6523 that were corrected. One of the amount transferred from account A, nine, zero, one, zero, dot point, zero, eight, zero, one, should have been $8,835, but the treasurer has corrected all of the above. Nothing. We're supposed, I don't know. Matt was supposed to talk about the south end and we're going to do that.
Is anybody on from LaBella in his place, do you know?
Not by no.
Just ask if anybody's on from.
Is anybody from LaBella on the call?
All right. We'll have to table that till the next week and hopefully Matt will be back by then. Same thing with the high service bid or are you?
I mean, I, I didn't hear from Laura. I just want to give you a figure. So I don't know. I think we should probably table that because she had the room wall. That's what the, these were the figures were.
Paul, can we?
All right. Tonight. All right, well.
What do we need them for?
The, there were two bidders on the high rate reservoir service.
Oh, so yeah, we can't do anything with that. We don't really know what the different options are.
No, well, well, the first, well, the basement is just to do the repairs.
Okay, but, but I mean, if we're going to approve it all together, we should know what the different options are.
Yeah.
All right. We'll table that. Well, you guys will table that from next week. All right. So for the 2223 paving for the village. We have currently $208,000 in paving, with paving and chips money. Bill said they need $8,000 for patching. Calanan Industries was reached out to for state contract bids. They gave us for all of Manan Road, $197,650. Manan Road to the railroad tracks would be $110,750 and Brookside to Lyons is 69,875. For a total of $18625 from Manan Road to the railroad tracks to Brookside to Lyons. To fall within the 200,000. The board would need to decide which sections we want to move with.
Is that going to have to be better about more state contract?
State contract.
Is it, is it kind of the chips money or it's just, you're just buying on state contract?
For this, because the state does the bidding for us, we decided on the state contract because it saves time and money on engineers. To just let the state do that bidding for us.
Yeah, and we, I had done this, you know, years ago that you're paying about 25% more buying the state contract that way. So is the paving ever going to go back out to business village advance? Ever?
Well, it has before.
And well, fair through the job to that.
Yeah. So that'll be up to the new board.
Okay, I'll take it up.
We should go for the.
It's not saving money.
Number six.
I'm sorry. What did she say?
What are we doing down there?
It's being tabled because of, oh, what's being done in the south end?
Yeah.
All new infrastructure, sewer, water, new paving.
Re-paving is going to be a big problem because the pavement, oh, like silicon compounds have integrated with the lower pavement.
It's all going to be removed. Well, it's gone right down. Everything's been ripped up.
So is 66.
Yeah. Now it's called, it's the concrete.
Before you or?
I know. Not before you though.
Yes, it was. 1928. So it's very important that the work progress.
I think we should go with the whole thing while we're here doing it. The consensus.
Manan Road to the road.
Yeah.
Yep. Do you want to make the motion for that?
I, I move that we approve the paving for all of Manan Road. But.
Not all.
Right. I was just, I was saying that all Manan Road for the railroad tracks. For $110,750 as well as Brookside to Lyons for $69,875. For a total of $180,000, $180,625.
All favor.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who's saying? Thank you.
We'll notify the residents so they can be sure because there's going to have to be some traffic stuff, especially Manan Road with the cars and stuff. So they'll, the engineers or the company will make sure that all that's done. And are you, is this you turn the next one?
Yeah, next question. Yes.
Okay. So, uh, for the past several months, and I want to thank Paul Coney for bringing this to our attention. We've decided to, you know, implement a excavation permit for utilities and contractors that, that come into the village and have to dig in the village right of way. Most municipalities surrounding us Albany, Waterfleet, the town, Cahoes, et cetera, all require a permit be submitted to the village clerk that is approved there to their public works. So, you know, as Steve would say, not recreating the wheel for, you know, for ourselves, looked at what some of the other municipalities did. And Paul had started us out with what he had developed for Albany County. And it was fairly elaborate. I will tell, I try to work that in, but.
Sorry.
They throw everything in the soup and nuts. So I have. They throw everything in the soup and nuts, uh, so I have a, I have a resolution, um, uh, and a resolution states, uh, resolution to impose an application requirement and fees on utilities and contractors seeking to excavate in the village Manas right of way. Uh, the village Manas Board of Trustees has terminated the best interest of the public safety of the residents of the village Manas to require utility companies and contractors seeking to excavate in the street sidewalks and general right of way of the village Manas to submit an application for any such work, uh, within forty-eight hours, or I, I, which would be better stated, uh, uh, no, no less than forty-eight hours, uh, of undertaking an excavation. The village Manas reserves the right to impose deposits fees and any necessary costs that may arise from such work. Application fees and deposits may be suspended, those folks, uh, and work application must be reviewed and approved by the format of the Republican Public Works prior to any excavation being undertaken. Um, the format of the DPW may waive the application timeframe and or associate fee in an emergency. Send a motion. Yep, that's the motion, second.
All favor.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Paul.
Good work on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Oh, and, uh, I should, should I add? Do we need, uh, let me ask you.
Both you and Diane, really, you know what, I'm sorry, Tim.
Go ahead, Chris.
No, no, both of you, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, our role, we got the language from.
Okay.
Dignam.
Yep.
They sent it in, so, do you guys have any questions on that at all? We approved it, subject to, to Bob's, uh, comments.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. All right, guys. Can't talk about that later.
Tim, are you done?
Uh, wanted to state, uh, I wanted to, uh, I should probably add that I, I'd like to get an implementation date of, beginning with the new board on July third. And, uh, there is a, uh, a co- uh, community liaison for every area, na- national grid has in place, so we need to get a copy of this application to their liaison, I don't know the name of that person. But I can try to find out this week. I was told and then I couldn't find it. Yes, thank you.
All right, uh, Ryan.
Yeah, it's, uh, the MOU that you all saw, um, and we kinda wanna get into, uh, you know, getting that signed. So we can, uh, start to officially work with the other agencies.
Did you just give a brief, a short brief, brief discussion on it, let us know what it is?
Uh, well, we're pretty much sharing services, um, you know, if they need help with accidents, we can help them with an accident, they can help us with an accident. If we need, uh, we've created a response team, they can, so it's kind of a culmination of the two agencies or the four agencies working together if they need it.
So the Waterfleet, Cahoes, Green Island?
And us.
Yes.
Rock and the River.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, it's, we're, we're kind of sharing everything, we may not always go to Cahoes, we may not always go to Waterfleet, they not, might not come here. Um, we do more with Waterfleet than we do Green Island and Cahoes, uh, but, you know, it's a, it's a good thing in light of you know, some of the new businesses that we may be having in the village. You know, there's gonna be definitely more traffic and more, more to do.
Right, so what, my question had been, uh, the, the model for this, was there other regional examples that?
Yeah, this is actually modeled after Troy, I think, the Council of Townings agreement, and like Troy has an agreement with Colling.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, East Green Bush, I believe.
Yeah, East Green Bush, North Green Bush, Stonak and Nassau all have a shared service agreement, they, they share cost of trainings, you know, they, so in other words. You know, each agency would send two, three or four people, and then they'll do, and they'll send, they'll share instructors, so.
Now, in particular to Articles six, seven, eight, privileges and immunities, live duty, death or injury, indemnification. Has there been any challenges to, you know, any of those items, everything has been?
Well, yeah, I mean, this went through Steve's.
Okay.
But not that I know of.
Okay, so you've never seen any issues arise or anybody challenged it, saying, no, that won't stand. Since there's this, you know, a lot of times, there's, there's separability things that go into these types of things, so if one portion fails. The rest stays in place, but I just want to make sure that, okay, if we've got an agreement that says if one of our guys gets injured while helping out Cahoes. That we're identified, they're covered, et cetera.
Right.
And that's all under it?
Yeah, it says that, but I just want to make sure that it's such a thing as.
So that's why it's.
Yeah.
In writing and.
Okay.
All right, so there, you need a resolution to authorize me to sign, um, agreement on behalf of the village, and then the other mayor will sign on for their own.
Some of.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Is there an official copy, or this will be official if I sign it?
That was, that was at the top, yeah.
I'll get you an official copy.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Tim, you have?
Yes, uh, the village of Manas is looking to pursue, uh, grants, uh, a grant in particular, uh, being offered through DEC. Uh, for, uh, river access, and, uh, so, yeah, what we'd like to do is submit an application for a grant. In order to do so, we need to register with DEC and the, uh, uh, Department of State, you know, uh, and the mayor would need to sign a grant application, or excuse me, a registration, and I'd like to request the mayor to sign the applet, uh, the grant application.
All favor.
Hi.
Did I sign it directly in front of somebody, or?
Yeah, one of us will know the rise of.
All right, don't let me forget.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Don, you're up for the windows?
We had, we want to replace the windows up here in the police department, or the fire department, I don't know where we're in, um. I, I had four companies come in, three of them gave me the bids, one of them, um, was, the first one was Advanced Glass. It was for eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, or seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. I told them that we want to replace exactly what they are, and they said, after they sent me the bid in, they said, we only do aluminum windows, so we, that was. Uh, McCur contracting was twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Comfort Window Company was nineteen thousand, five hundred and twelve.
Set the bid for Comfort, some of.
Second, all favor?
Hi. What's their timeframe?
Um, I'm not sure, if it's a, I know that there's a little bit of a backlog, but it's not as bad as it was.
Okay, but this summer, so?
Yeah, it'll be done this summer.
Um, this is, uh, Tom Bates from LaBella, I had heard the mayor asking if there was anybody from LaBella, and I finally figured out how to unmute.
Um, hi, Tom, are you able to give an update on the south end?
Sure, if, if, um, you'd like that. Um, presently, uh, we were wrapping up a design for the, um, Contract One, which is replacement of the water and sewer throughout the south end, and also replacement of the, um, the full road sections, and, uh, that's with DEC and DOH right now. Uh, and we're waiting their review comments, and in the meantime, we're, um, kinda cleaning up any of the, uh, things that we find, so that's that'll be ready, um, ready to go, we're hoping, um, to bid, uh, later this summer. And, um, the Contract Two, which is the transmission main valve, that's out to bid right now. And we've had, um, several contractors pick that up, and, uh, we're gonna be opening bids on the twenty-ninth, uh, for that one. And so that work will start, construction work will start probably later in the summer as well.
Yep. You're gonna reset the curbs?
Yes, I mean, the plan is to, um, re- reuse the, as much, uh, granite curbing as we can and, uh, have to replace, uh, curbing that is, uh, you replace, or, you know, is damaged.
All right, um, I know it was Lauren working on the high service reservoir, do you have any information on that, or we should wait till next meeting?
Yeah, I, I don't have a whole lot on, on that one, I didn't get a chance to talk to her, um, on, on what, you know, where the bids came in and, and what the different alternatives are with that, I apologize.
No, that's all right, all right.
Do we also approve the, um, the, the professional service agreement with LaBella for this?
Was that the next meeting?
I don't know, was that, that was in the, that was in that packet that Tom sent us?
Yes.
Do we have this?
Yeah, I gave, uh, that was part of it, so, it says, south end.
Oh, okay.
Water and sewer, um.
Where is it?
Professional service agreement.
I'm, I'm looking.
I, I can give a little background on that if you'd like. Um, that, uh, that, as I was saying, the design is wrapping up, and the design has wrapped up for the transmission main valve. And they're gonna be, we're gonna be moving to, uh, bid opening and contract award, and then construction, uh, shortly after. So this, the contract, um, proposal that we had put in for professional services was for, um, bidding, uh, contract award and construction phase services for both the, uh, transmission main, and also for the, uh, the south end water and sewer, um, contract administration and con- uh, construction inspection services for, for both of those contracts.
Okay. I see it, yeah.
So what do we need for this?
Yeah, so what are you, what are we doing, we're approving your professional services for your feet?
Yeah, so the, um, the first, the first phase of, uh, with the design, that had been approved, and we have a contract for that. And then this is really the next phase, that's, it's all within the EFC scope of, the, the environmental facilities corp, um, uh, scope of work that we had put together originally for a professional services. And so this is really just the approval of the next, the next step for professional services to cover, uh, construction fees, services, really.
Our next meeting is in a week, um, and, and I haven't had sufficient time, as in, uh, to review it. Can this wait a week?
Tom, did you hear what Brian said?
Is it, is asking, uh, if it can wait a week, uh, yeah, it, don't want, don't want, you want you to make sure you read through it, if you have any questions, um, just, you know, give me an email and, uh, we'll, we'll get you, get you the answers.
All right.
That's if you understand what, what's involved with that, and then, um, uh, you know, go from there, that's it.
It looks good, I just need, we need time to read it carefully done.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
All thanks, thank you.
Talking about the south end, just really quick, I know Niagara Mohawk did a lot of gas replacements, are they gonna finish Amsterdam and Wolford Avenue before this new construction?
They're supposed to be finished at this sum- this summer, that's what they, that's what they told us.
So in line with the?
I don't know if it'd be in line, but it's probably before that.
The goal was to have everything before they dig again.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Very good, thank you. Bye, thanks. Great, um, are you talking about the trees?
Um, Mike didn't get any more bids, he didn't get any, he qualms several people, always gone back to them, so I think we should table that also.
But the, uh, just, um, to, uh, to look at, it's just for, for the removal, because the, uh, Jen talked about the replacement, so.
I thought it was replacement.
No, it's the, the, it's.
That's my error, I thought.
It's just, it's just the removal, I mean.
I have no problem.
The, the price is, is really good.
Yes.
Uh, this was a favorite of Frank from, uh, from True Value, uh, I did, as a matter of practice, I just, you know, I would like to see another bid, but I mean, having had.
Mike, Mike is try, he's called, hell, Mike has just tempted several companies, and nobody's getting back from.
And I have, I mean, I have no issue with, with these, I, I just want, as we, when we talk about the replacement of it, I just wanna leave the door open for a second pickleball court down the road, so that's my only concern with the replacement, but I'm fine, right, right, right. Yeah, but I'm, I'm fine with, with this, but, you know, whatever, I'll.
Well, she's trying to get other folks, we can.
We can wait a week.
Sure.
All right. And, and if he's got an email that he said he contacted, may haven't responded, just forward that to the rest of us, so there's doc, you know, documentation that he reached out, and there was no.
Right, there's no other bids, like, if we don't get other bids for.
I thought, I thought, I thought it was a replacement, that's, that was my, I made.
And we're hoping that channel thirteen was gonna.
Yeah.
Pay for something.
Pay for something.
He's done it.
Um, you doing a follow-up?
Yeah, I can do a follow-up on the, the rooftop units have all been installed, we have programmable, um, we couldn't put a wifi nerf mats in these, because you'd have to run new wiring, and it was gonna be an additional three thousand dollars, for, we got, we put the programmable ones in. The new dump truck's been delivered, is now in service, all registered, um, the water sewer bills are gonna be going out on June first. July, no.
I did, I corrected that.
So, so to, to clarify, the water and sewer bills, they will be mailed out on June thirtieth, they should be in hand the first, well, probably Monday, the third. Um, so make it at Saturday, who knows? What's on this?
Thank you. And the tax bills are due.
And, and the tax bills are due on June thirtieth, um, July first starts the payment date.
And the annual audit's gonna begin the second week in July, and also on July fifteenth, the Red Cross is gonna be having a blood drive up here.
Up, uh, here in the hall?
Yeah.
What day, what's the date of that one?
It's a Tuesday.
Oh, with July what?
July sixteenth, August fifteenth, from eleven to eight P M. And that's all I got.
Uh, just a thank you to Diane for spearheading the veterans' flags, I think we're up to about seventy-five flags now along Broadway. Um, if word was like, we've agreed to continue on, with that, doing that, but if you wanna move on from that. But we're happy to do that if you want us to, and thank you for joining us up here for the past week, yes?
Thank you.
A pleasure working with you.
Thank you both for that.
And we do have personnel and legal matters for executive session, you guys stay. You want to clear?
Got a note right. I've got a note right.
Good to see you, Paul.
You see me?
That's right.
All right, thank you. I can get out your signature yourself.
Well, I think it stopped raining, so that's good. Yes.